Good afternoon, everyone. It's still light out, so we now say good afternoon instead of good evening. Welcome to the April 23rd, 2024 meeting of the Passaic County Board of County Commissioners. Let's start, Lou, with the roll call and open public meetings law.
County Commissioners Cruz.
Here.
Duffy.
Here.
Gallo.
Here.
James. Lapour. Deputy Director Lazara.
Here.
Director Bartlett.
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen, the notice requirement of the open public meetings law has been satisfied with respect to this meeting specifying the time, date, and location, including the annual notice adopted at the reorganization meeting filed with the county clerk and posted administration building and mail to two newspapers in accordance with the provisions of the law.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance, invocation, and moment of silence. It's our privilege to welcome Monsignor Gina Silva here for the invocation, but Father Ryan, would you do the official honors?
Well, he's doing the official honors. I'm the warm-up act. We've been asked in a special way to remember Lieutenant Tom Kalella, who was a New Jersey State Trooper who passed away today, so if you can keep him in your prayers. We are a nation under God, a state under God, a county under God, and every time our commissioners come together, they place themselves in the holy presence of God to hopefully do His work. And tonight, we have the neighbor right next door of this building who is going to lead us in prayer, Monsignor Gina Silva, who is the rector of the cathedral.
And thank you so much, John, for the invitation. I'm here with Avanya Vagan McTell, who runs our faith formation, and this is really special for us. At the cathedral, we've opened programs so that every child, every adult, no matter what special need, has a home at the cathedral and has somebody to accompany him or her to God, because we all have special needs. We're all the same. Some are just more evident than others. And so gathering together of friends, different faith traditions, different cultures, we gather in the name of the Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen. Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the wonderful women and men, young and old, all those with special needs, especially with autism. May we always see each one of them as gifts from heaven, as children of God made in your image and likeness. May we allow them to celebrate the gifts that they have, to use the talents that are there. May we accompany them, taking into account their special needs. And Heavenly Father, we thank you for their mothers and their fathers, the first teachers of their children. We thank you for our city and our county, for all those who care for those with autism. Teach and inspire, instruct, and welcome. May Almighty God bless our efforts. May we grow together as family, taking into account the special needs that each one of us has, as made in your image and likeness, in the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Thank you.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence to remember all the men and women who have died serving in the U.S. armed forces and all who have died of COVID-19, especially the 2,299 residents of Passaic County.
Director, on the minutes, on the second page of the minutes, the membership is incorrect, and I will make that correction. It needs to be amended.
Okay. Thank you, Lou. With that correction, can I have a motion for approval of the minutes of April 9?
Make that motion. Second. County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
James. Lapour. Deputy Director Lazara.
Yes.
Director Bartlett.
Yes, may I have a motion to approve the proclamations?
Move it.
Second.
County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
James. Lapour. Deputy Director Lazara.
Yes.
Director Bartlett.
Yes, that brings us to the administrative report. Matthew?
Thank you, Director. First, we have our distinguished Passaic County Clerk coming up to present a proclamation to Elizabeth Hernandez on her retirement from the, along with Commissioner Lapour from the Clerk's Registered Division. So, Madam Clerk, Commissioner Lapour.
Good evening, everyone. It gives me a distinct pleasure and honor to be able to present you with this proclamation from the Board of County Commissioners. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Passaic has the desire to recognize Elizabeth Hernandez as she retires from the Passaic County Clerk's Office Registered Division. Whereas Elizabeth Hernandez embarked on a professional journey right out of high school on August 1st, 1993, at the Passaic County Register of Deeds, originally located at 77 Hamilton Street in Patterson, New Jersey. Elizabeth Hernandez was commended after her first three years of service for her dedication, efficient recording of land record documents, inspection of documents, and a provision of quality customer service. Whereas Elizabeth, on May 19th, 1997, achieved a promotion to the role of cashier, and on July 5th, 2001, ascended to the role of senior cashier, and has achieved a third promotion to the position of the principal cashier on November 23, 2004. Whereas Elizabeth Hernandez was instrumental in the startup of the electronic recording on December 2000, she spearheaded the initial launch of creating ACH accounts and acceptance of ACH payments, which enables property documents to be recorded more efficiently for both the property owner and the office. Whereas Elizabeth Hernandez volunteered to keep the services of the Registry Division up to date by working in the office during the COVID-19 public health crisis. This work consequently helped ensure the real estate industry in Passaic County did not shut down due to the public health crisis. Whereas Elizabeth Hernandez, in 2023, played a key role in the implementation of Daniels Law by redacting the sensitive information of covered persons on thousands of property records, thereby assisting the county clerk, county clerk's office, and being one of the most efficient offices handling Daniels Law. Elizabeth Hernandez will be retiring. That's not me. Elizabeth Hernandez will be retiring on May 1st, 2024, having worked with six registrar and county clerk administrations. The Honorable Frank Sylvester, the Honorable Gerald D. Stefano, the Honorable Ronnie Ockenson, Honorable Karen Brown, Honorable Kristen Carrato, and Honorable Daniel Ireland Imhoff, marking a culmination of an impressive tenure of 30 and a half years in the dedicated service to Passaic County. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Passaic County Board of County Commissioners that it hereby recognizes and applauds Elizabeth Hernandez for the significant contributions she has made to the county of Passaic and to the community. Be it further proclaimed that this board wishes Elizabeth Hernandez health, happiness, and retirement.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much for all of this. I really, really appreciate it. Thank you to my family and friends who are here, all of my coworkers. Thank you so much for so many years of love and laughter and family, because we are family after 30 years, and you're not getting rid of me yet, but thank you so much, everybody. Thank you.
Does this go back, just back?
Director, next, I think I'm going to turn it over to you for our Autism Awareness Month.
That's correct, Matt. Thank you.
And congratulations to Elizabeth.
Yes, here, here. Yes, it is April, which is Autism Awareness Month, also known as Autism Acceptance Month. We're fortunate in Passaic County to have a wonderful group of advocates, particularly parents and particularly moms, who you're going to meet some of this evening, who are advocating for their young people who are on the autism spectrum or, and have related disorders. It's a real need. It's one that Passaic County has tried consistently to respond to. Our Sheriff's Department, for example, has special programs for people with autism and other disabilities who have issues with wandering, a GPS system that can help locate those people and make sure that they're safe. We also go to particular efforts of the Passaic County Police Academy and Public Safety Academy to make sure that when we train police officers, EMTs, firefighters, and so forth here in Passaic County, they are trained to respond to and recognize the needs of people on the spectrum, so that they're trained to cope with circumstances where an individual may not be responding as a neurotypical person would expect, or may not be verbal, for example, and are able to keep those people safe and keep the interactions between law enforcement and individuals with those special needs safe. And I'm very proud of the work of our Sheriff's Department and all the other folks that do work in that space. I know that across our county government, we're trying to increase our sensitivity to the range of needs, because one of the things that folks observe is that we're not talking anymore about children in school. We're talking about young adults. We're even talking about older adults who are now being recognized as having autism spectrum disorders that, in my generation and the other generations represented on this day, us may not even have been named that. And I've been very fortunate over many of these years also to work closely with Galena De La Hoz, my aide who is here in the room. But even more important, somebody who, as a mother herself and an advocate herself, makes sure that language is not a barrier to families accessing the information they need and the care and services they need. We're in a county that is almost 40%, 40% Latino in our population. That's what we learned in our 2020 census. That means responsiveness that is linguistically and culturally appropriate is another obligation of ours, and Galena does extraordinary work in that regard. So I actually want to begin by introducing her so that she can introduce a short film that we're all going to see to learn a little bit more about autism, and then we're going to move on to presentation of four really remarkable proclamations, and then recognizing four young people in the room here with certificates. So, Galena, put down the camera and step up to the microphone.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much for being here today. It means a lot for our families and for our community. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you to all of you, to the Board of Commissioners, for this opportunity to open the microphone and the space to receive our families and to listen to our voices. As you may know, April is Autism Acceptance or Awareness Month. Autism acceptance is a period dedicated to promoting understanding, acceptance, and inclusion for people with autism. It is a time when walls come down as communities, organizations, and individuals all take to the streets to raise awareness about autism. This is a period also we can use to mark advocacy and to fight for better rights and for better living conditions for all of the individuals under the spectrum. I would like to ask for your attention today to watch a very brief video. It's an educational video where you can see and recognize certain facts and statistics probably about autism. Thank you for being here, and congratulations to all the honorees.
Seeing some of you, I've known some of you, and, you know, on TV, lots of times now, you're seeing more things about people that are autistic in a much more positive way. So they had somebody, I don't know if it wasn't Ellen, because she's no longer on, but there was somebody on with a kid from South Carolina who worked at a hotel, and he drew people to the hotel because he was the nicest person. He would sing, he would interact with them, and he was a happy person, and he was happy to have the job, and everybody went there to see him. So it increased their workflow dramatically, and I, these are angels. I think these are really angels. You're tested when you run into somebody with autism. You're being tested. It's how you respond to that human being that matters. So if you respond properly to that human being, I'm going to guess that God is very happy with you. And I think that that's what these are. These are little angels that are here to test you, to see how you treat people who have differences of ability than you. And how do you treat them? Do you treat them well? Do you ignore them? Do you make remarks about them that there's something wrong with them? Because there's nothing wrong with them. You know, my neighbor's son has Tourette Syndrome and autism, so she's got rough things to deal with. That's the nicest kid you'll ever meet in your life, and we did a whole thing in Shirley's office one time for people with disabilities, and we found out that he was being not treated properly by the teacher that he had in Clifton High School. So we had that switched to a person who was much more sympathetic to somebody, and he flourished, because all he needed was the caring that somebody was going to give him. So you people here who are getting honored today, you're spending time, your time, making somebody's lives better, and I'm looking at you and so happy that you're here, because I think we owe all of you a great deal of gratitude for what you did for people who really need your help and need your caring and need your, you know, like I said, they're angels, and if you're treating them right and you're giving them the love that, they'll return the love that you're giving them tenfold. And for those of you who were involved, you know that's true. So I do want to get to this proclamation, and it has to do with Clifton, which is where I live. So it's whereas the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Passaic is aware that the month of April has been designated as National Autism Awareness Month, and at this time deems it fitting and appropriate to recognize Gabriella and Robert Mariello. And whereas Gabriella and Robert Mariello formed a bambino buddy ball team in 2017 and Special Olympics bowling team in 2019, with plans to expand into other sports soon. Whereas Gabriella and Robert have recently started to collaborate with the Clifton Health Department on art classes, music therapy, classes with adaptive sports, and with plans to do more. And they have done a buddy ball team in 2017, Special Olympics bowling team, with plans to expand to other sports, and where they have recently started to collaborate with the Clifton Health Department on art classes, music therapy classes, which are very important, and the adaptive sports with plans to do more. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Passaic that it publicly acknowledges Gabriella and Robert Mariello as a fitting tribute for their significant contributions that they have made at the time, effort, and energy which they have unselfishly devoted to the citizenry of the County of Passaic. And be it further proclaimed that the Board wishes Gabriella and Robert continued health, happiness, and success in their future endeavors, and may they continue to help those who need the help and need their love.
He's very tall.
I just, I just have to say thank you to the Commissioners, and I'm really sorry my back is to them right now, but this is the way the microphone is. But I really appreciate when you train police officers and when you train, and you understand, you get it, you guys get it, and you, we totally appreciate it. This has been our life for 14 years now, and we do not see it stopping, we just see it growing. When they, I find it hard to say thank you for something beautiful like this, because to me, it's something that should be done naturally as a father of an autistic child. It's, my kid wants to play baseball, so what do I do? I start a baseball team, and I get 25 of his friends, and we play every Sunday in the park. So when I see something like this, I thank you, but to me, it's natural. Oh, well, guess what? He wanted to bowl, so what do we do? We start a Special Olympics bowling team, because he wanted to bowl, so we get 15 of his friends and we bowl. It's, I, I, I love this, I really do, and thank you. It's very hard for me to say that, but I appreciate it from the bottom of my heart. I'm speaking, I'm speaking for my wife, because she's very shy.
We really do do God's work, and we know that that's so. And you're shaking your head, but you know it's so. You see it every day, do you not? So, you know, our goal at some point is to try to copy things that are done going on in Bergen County. Now they're in our county in Totowa, so we have a ways to go to serve a community that needs some serving, but we will work on that, and we'll make sure that that happens with your help.
Next, my colleague Sandy Lazara is going to introduce Raquel Soto.
Raquel Soto? Come on up. I have, I was a teacher for a long time, and we had students in our school, obviously, that had special needs. And one of the things that other teachers and staff and administration would say is, why don't we have more parents who advocate for their children? You are the poster child for that. You, we need more parents like you who advocate. And listen, I'm talking about every single kid out there in the world. Every child needs someone who's going to be their biggest cheerleader and their biggest advocate. So I am especially proud. So I am especially proud to present you with this proclamation. And I'm just going to read it real quick. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Passaic is aware that the month of April has been designated as National Autism Awareness Month, and at this time deems it fitting and appropriate to recognize Raquel Soto. Whereas Raquel Soto was born in Brooklyn, New York, at the age of five relocated to Larry's, did I say that?
Latisse.
I'm wrong. I'll have to practice. Puerto Rico, and moved to the city of Patterson at the age of 11. Whereas Raquel Soto attended School 13, attended Eastside High School, and became a mother at the young age of 17. Raquel Soto finished school becoming a nursing assistant and worked at Pregnant Health Care for six years, and worked at the Passaic County Jail for two years, serving commissary to the inmates. And whereas Raquel Soto, at the age of 25, became pregnant with her daughter Genesis, who was born prematurely with a cyst in her brain with little hope of survival. Her son Mark was born, oh wait, her son Mark, she continued her journey with her son Mark as a special needs advocate. And as that started to unfold, her daughter was denied special services, and her son was diagnosed with autism at the age of three. Just what I said, we need people like you. Whereas Raquel Soto has been an advocate for over 25 years, advocating for the rights of special education services for children throughout Passaic County, and has fought for her children with severe autism and developmental disabilities to receive all services to which they are entitled. Whereas Raquel Soto has served as a committee member for Autism Speaks. She currently is an ambassador for Autism New Jersey, and has served the community of Patterson for 15 years, working in a homeless, in a shelter for homeless moms and their children. Whereas Raquel Soto was diagnosed with autism and ADHD in December of 2023, and is currently a law student at Berkeley College, where she advocates for herself to receive an ADA plan so she can receive the proper Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Passaic that it publicly acknowledges Raquel Soto as a fitting tribute for the significant contributions she has made and the time, effort, and energy with which she has unselfishly devoted to the citizenry of the County of Passaic. And be it further proclaimed that this board wishes Raquel Soto continued health, happiness, and success in all her future endeavors. You're quite the person.
I said I wasn't going to cry, but they're going to come down. Thank you, commissioners, for this recommendation, recognition. I'm a little nervous. Yeah, my children, Gellina, come on, Gellina. Mark and Genesis and Gellina, this is an honor. If it's not because of Gellina or Joe Soyasi, I wouldn't be here. Thank you, commissioners. And I apologize for stuttering, that's part of who I am. This has been a long journey, especially with my diagnosis, because I used to be all over the place like a little bouncing ball, and I didn't know why. But I, I hope and pray that I finish my degree in law and become an attorney to fight for these children with disability and adults. And it's going to be a long journey. I still got three more years, but it's not impossible. Thank you.
We're going to take a picture.
Okay. Come on, Genesis.
Is this Genesis?
This is Genesis. This is my Genesis. She loves makeup. Gellina, come.
All right, now it's my turn. I'm just going to continue on with the message that my colleagues have already been projecting this evening on the importance of having individuals that are willing to take the task and have the calling of working with those that are the most vulnerable in every state. And in particular, you know, having the will and the compassion in the heart to really take on the task. And again, the calling of just wanting to get into a particular field that deals with individuals that have challenges but are just as important as everyone else. And it takes a certain individual to go into that and really want to make sure they leave their mark and make a change and make a difference in a person's life and improving the quality of life of those that need the most help. And when we talk about that, we have to talk about Raheem Wise, who has, you know, done what he's done and educated himself to be able to give back and, you know, serve, like I said, the population that needs our help the most. There's not enough that we can do as government officials, you know, to help these individuals, but that's why we lean on the professionals and individuals that have taken the task to go out there and really make a difference in these individuals' lives. And so that's why it's an honor for me as well to be able to present Brother Raheem with this proclamation, if you don't mind joining me up here. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Passaic is aware that the month of April has been designated a National Autism Awareness Month, and at this time deems it fitting and appropriate to recognize Raheem Wise. Whereas Raheem Wise graduated from Arizona State University with a master's in education and a certification in applied behavior analysis. Whereas Raheem Wise has over 10 years of experience in working with and providing care to individuals who serve and are challenged with challenged behaviors. Whereas Raheem Wise stated, started as a family support coordinator for individuals with various diagnoses such as epilepsy, intellectual disabilities, and autism spectrum. And whereas Raheem Wise has worn many hats, including a behavioral support specialist, applied behavior analysis therapist, board-certified behavior analyst, and now Rainbow ABA's crisis management coordinator. Where Raheem Wise loves teaching and bringing joy to the lives of the individuals he provides services and to their families, creating change and helping others obtain their goals. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Passaic that it publicly acknowledges Raheem Wise as a fitting tribute for the significant contributions he has made and to the time, effort, and energy which he has unselfishly devoted to the citizenry of the County of Passaic. Let it be further proclaimed that this board wishes Raheem Wise continued health, happiness, and success in all his future endeavors. Congratulations.
First of all, I'd like to thank the commission as a whole for having me here, to be privileged of this honor. Words can't express how I feel at this moment, you know? I'd just like to thank everyone who's just out here today and shared their stories and just, it feels good just being part of the journey that we're on. Because I always, like I even tell my individuals or the families or anybody that we provide services to, I always tell them that it's a marathon, you know? It's not a race. Races typically get from one way, one place to another, to the finish line, but the marathon is always constantly ongoing, right? So I'd just like to thank everyone for having this honor. This is a real prestige honor for me, especially with my dedication, but I think the biggest accolade here for me today is just being able to make meaningful change to the people that I'm around, right? So I'd like to thank my aunt, who's here in attendance, and one of my biggest supporters. And again, thank you, everyone, for this. This is a tremendous honor.
All right. I love the arc of these three presentations so far, because it's about, you know, starting with childhood and advocating and, you know, continuing to advocate as your child will grow up into adulthood, the professional support that folks need, discovering in a case like Raquel's that, in fact, you as an adult have some needs that were never diagnosed. And then the other piece of it, especially as we're watching young people move on into young adulthood, is what next? And I want to ask Guillermo Garcia to join me here at the podium. You know, because yours, Guillermo, is a story that starts, a story of service that starts way back in Peru and carries forward to the way that you conduct your business right here in Passaic County right now. So I'm proud to read this into the record. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Passaic is aware that the month of April has been designated National Autism Awareness Month, and at this time deems it fitting and appropriate to recognize Guillermo Garcia. And whereas Guillermo Garcia was born in Lima, Peru, and attended the University of San Martín de Porres, where he graduated with a degree in business administration. And whereas Guillermo Garcia worked as a Department of Labor inspector for the Ministry of Labor and Social Promotion for five years, his work including labor negotiations in an era marked by terrorism that devastated Peru for many years. And whereas Guillermo Garcia received death threats by terrorist groups while working for the Peruvian state in the 1980s, so he decided to immigrate to the United States in search of better horizons. He started working in various occupations as any immigrant and joined the United States Army from 1989 to 1996. And after serving on active duty, he joined the National Guard in the state of New Jersey and the Reserve Army in the state of Georgia. And whereas Guillermo Garcia fulfilled his dreams of starting his own business and opened Luigi's Liquor Store of alcoholic beverages in Passaic County, New Jersey, in the same location that he began his career in the world of supermarkets. And whereas Guillermo Garcia started as a cashier, worked for president and presidential caterers, worked at a supermarket store manager, works for the Cuellar family, and is currently the executive director of Shoprite Supermarket in Passaic-Clifton and Shoprite Wines and Spirits in Clifton. And whereas Guillermo Garcia started a program 20 years ago to hire and give opportunities to young men and women on the autism spectrum, and currently has hired around 20 to 25 employees on the spectrum, and he supports many organizations across Passaic and Bergen Counties in their many programs. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Passaic that it publicly acknowledges Guillermo Garcia as a fitting tribute for the significant contributions he has made and the time, effort, and energy which he has unselfishly devoted to the citizenry of the County of Passaic. And be it further proclaimed that this board wishes Guillermo Garcia continued health, happiness, and success in all his future endeavors.
Thank you, commissioners. Thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you, this is, this award is, that means a lot for me. Yo soy así. Thank you. Gellina loves, think about me. I'm always saying, I'm here to serve my community. I'm here to give everything what I have. I'm blessing, I have a son, 20 years old, that he's my angel. He does everything for me. I work hard for my community. I gave opportunity to many kids from 17, 18, 19, 20, 21 years old. They are the best worker. They are the most loyalty people that can meet in my life. They're super smart. And thank you, everybody, to support our community and give to the kids everything what we have. Thank you.
And just as your families were complete when your children joined them, the program here is complete when we recognized a couple of young adults on the spectrum who've done extraordinary work advocating for themselves. So I want to invite Chris, Ethan, Thomas, and Mark to come up. And Mark, please bring your artwork. All right. Good. All right. So each of these young men has done remarkable things in their own space, in their own schools, in their own lives, advocating for themselves and people like them. I actually want to start at the far end and acknowledge Mark, because Mark, you're holding a piece of artwork that you created. And do you want to tell us about it, or shall I tell a little bit about it? Okay. So this past October, Passaic County lost a really extraordinary advocate for children and families affected by autism, and that was Dr. Cecilia Feeley. I talked a little bit about Cecilia back at the time, but Cecilia was someone who actually, after her son Alex was born and she started watching him deal with the challenges that he had as someone dealing with autism, she actually went back to school, got her PhD at the Voorhees Center for Transportation at Rutgers University with a dissertation PhD at the Voorhees Center for Transportation at Rutgers University with a dissertation all about how young people and people on the spectrum could access public transportation and access, you know, the jobs and the opportunities that come with not being able to drive yourself, but how do we do that safely in our public transit system? And her dissertation and her work after that as an advocate, you know, made an extraordinary difference for so many young people. And as I say, we lost her last fall. And, Mark, you created a piece of artwork, a drawing of Cecilia and her son Alex, which is just beautiful. Thank you. And, Mark, I'll present you the first of the certificates, and I'll read Mark's so you know what everyone says. The Board of County Commissioners, in recognition and appreciation, awards this certificate to Mark Masonette for your effort, resiliency, and inspirational contribution to help us recognize autism awareness in Passaic County.
So, as an individual with autism, having been diagnosed for so long ago, it was very difficult for me as a child to have socialized and, like, participate in, like, classes and, you know? And without the help of my mother, Raquel Soto, and the help of my family and my friends and my teacher, who's named Robert Harold Jr., I, without them, I wouldn't be here standing today and being the man who I am today. And I'd like to thank, I'm sorry, and everyone here for, you know, gifting me this, so, thank you.
All right. Continuing down the line, Chris, thank you for everything you do to advocate for yourself and your family and everyone.
If I may be honest, a doctor told me I wouldn't be able to talk or go to college, but I'm going to college soon. Of course, I still have a lot to learn, but when I finish, I plan to begin working on my life's work and stuff, but don't worry. If anyone out there is struggling with autism, know you'll be fine too, even if it takes time.
What a wonderful, powerful message. It reminds me, on Saturday, I went to an Eagle Scout ceremony in North Halden of a young man who is himself, was diagnosed on the autism spectrum and rose through the ranks to achieve a rank that only three percent of boys who start in scouting achieve. And he actually built for his Eagle Scout project two little free libraries in Gothelbrook Park in Hawthorne here in Passaic County. His name's James Nevitoff, and he's also leaving for college this fall, and there's another great, you know him?
Yeah.
All right. He was at your old school, okay. Well, you know what, in that case...
He was a little bit of a bully.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm sorry to hear, I'm sorry to hear about that, Thomas, but, hey, everybody has their experiences with different people. But since you're already talking, I want to give you your certificate and ask if you want to add anything, talk about your experience.
More of anything. I had some, I was diagnosed with autism back in 2009. I don't remember it, but my parents told me. And I had to move to another school this year because at my old school, Chapel Hill, they, the staff was going too tough on me and my schedule was really empty. Not just that, but they were also starting to become less allergy-friendly.
That's important. Wow. It was, it was great, Thomas. And you advocated for yourself, and that was terrific. And Ethan, this is your certificate, please say whatever you'd like to say.
I don't know, I don't particularly want to be like, I mean, thank you, obviously, mine doesn't like, I guess, growing up and going on, I, I'm going to be honest, I have screwed up time, time, time again. Sometimes it was, sometimes I just really wanted to just crawl into a hole and run away. I don't know what, and I'm, I mean, can I continue, please? Please, let me talk on my own. I was going somewhere...
For those of you who don't know, I'm sorry, for those of you who don't know, Ethan is Gerlina's son.
Yeah, like, yeah, I wanted to say that, yeah, I screwed up. I, I, like, and even in college, I really screwed up since, like, into two-year college and it's already, and I'm already serving around four years, but, I don't know, I still push on even something like that. I don't know why, maybe I just want something better with my life, but, I mean, I also just would appreciate, I mean, just, I guess if you have a kid, just treat them like a kid, don't make a big deal out of it, it's just part of them, not, not something you should censor, make a defining part of them, like, just a part of them, not the most defining part of them or whatever.
Wow. Those were some really amazing messages, weren't they? When kids can speak in their own words, we learn so, so much. If we can, let's get all the young people up here, we'll take one more picture, and then we'll move on with the meeting. Every year I learn something really special during Autism Awareness Month. Thank you again to our honorees and congratulations and to the young men that we all met. Thank you to Gerlina for putting this entire day together. And with that, I think we will move on. Oh, and my lawyer here reminds me, I need to note for the record that we did not actually include, which was it? Raheem among the, we're memorializing that on our next agenda. Don't worry, it still counts, you don't have to give it back. We're just gonna make a note to include you in our agenda in May because we did honor you here tonight. So with that, Matt, I'm gonna pass it back to you, and then you're gonna pass it back to me.
Yep, Director, that's all I have, thank you. Congratulations, everyone.
All right, so that brings us to county commissioner reports. It is, it was Earth Day yesterday, but here in Passaic County, Earth Day is all of next weekend. I want to encourage folks, check out these flyers on our social media pages, on Instagram, Facebook, and Twitter. We've got an Earth Day celebration this Saturday up at the boathouse at Garrett Mountain, starting at nine AM. We're gonna have different activities, we're gonna be planting a tree and doing a bunch of other things up there. If you're more of an indoor person, on Sunday, the 28th, we actually have a free Indoor Festival of the Earth at PCTI, Passaic County Technical Institute, at 45 Reinhardt Road in Wayne. That's gonna be a whole bunch of great free activities for kids and young adults, and we encourage you to join us for both of those events. For more information, check out our website, passaiccountynj.org, or our social media pages that I just mentioned. So with that, Sandy?
I just want to let everyone know that this is, there's even more going on in Passaic County this weekend. So, we have our 20th Annual Passaic County Film Festival on April 27, 2004, starting at 11:00 AM. These are small, like, a couple minutes long, I guess, videos that students from around the county produce and they put on, and it's just a wonderful event. It's at the Public Safety Academy out on Oldham Road in Wayne. Again, it starts at 11 o'clock on the 27th. And on April 27th and 28th in Hawthorne at Gothelbrook Park is Art in the Park. Now, we're gonna have artists here, we're gonna have performers here, we're gonna have vendors there. Saturday, the 27th, it begins at 11 and ends at 7. On the 28th, it begins at 11 and it ends at 5. So there's a lot of things going on in Passaic County this weekend, and I hope our residents, please take, you know, come see us, come enjoy the festivities, you won't regret it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Sandy Orlando.
I don't have anything to report this evening, Director.
Terry?
Neither do I, thank you, Director.
Nick?
Neither do I, Director.
Cruz? Pat?
Yes, so thank you, Director. Finances have a light schedule this week. There's seven resolutions on the agenda for my colleagues' purview and support, thank you.
All right, in the absence of communications, those of you following along on the agenda, that brings us to the letter K, which is the oral portion of the meeting. Can I have a motion to open the public portion?
So move second.
Lizarra and Cruz.
County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
James?
Lapour?
Deputy Director Lizarra?
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Yes, so this is the part where members of the public can come to the podium, you have up to three minutes to address any concern that you may have. Please begin with your name and address, and take note that anything you say will become part of the public record of today's meeting.
Seeing no one at the podium, Director, I move to close the public portion.
Second.
County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
James?
Lapour?
Deputy Director Lizarra?
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Yes. All right, that brings us to our consent agenda. Counsel, any late starters?
No, Director.
Any need to go into executive session?
No, Director.
Okay, do any of my colleagues want any of these items removed and voted separately? Hearing none, I will take a motion and a second on the consent agenda.
Move it.
County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
James?
Lapour?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lizarra?
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Yes. That brings us to new business. Personnel.
Move personnel. Second.
County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
James?
Lapour?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lizarra?
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Yes, can I have a move? Well, anybody have anything else to add before I ask for our final motion? I do. Matt very helpfully points out the note that's sitting right next to me. For those of you who are still following along with January's schedule for the year, take note that we have tinkered around with our schedule for the month of May. We're having a single meeting in the month of May, it will be on Tuesday, May 21st, at 5:30 PM, right here in this beautiful meeting room, but we will not be here on the times originally scheduled, and I think that was part of our last agenda, so we don't need to move it. Just wanted to remind folks, we will next see you four weeks from tonight on May 21. And with that, can I have a motion to dis...
Move it.
County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Lapour?
Yes.
James?
Deputy Director Lizarra? Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Yes, thank you all very much, have a terrific evening.